December ninth, special workshop informational session thing. Bruce is going to lead us through a presentation for those folks who would like to cogitate on this and then come back. On Wednesday, we will have a public hearing on the information that we're giving. We'll elaborate on that more as soon as Bruce gets started. First thing I need is an approval of the agenda, which...
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, do you want to jump right in?
Thank you. This is the first time I can honestly say that I can, that I can say without breaking a sweat that I was late because I was in the jet. But it was just a tour this time. So, I want to talk about some things that have come to light that we know are going to have some significant cost implications. And so, we talk about them separately a lot at meetings, but we never talk to them all at one time. So, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting and we appreciate your being here. I'm not trying to pick on Oregon, but because every state has some natural disaster potential. Midwest has tornadoes and flooding, north is frigid, robusturey winters, California has earthquakes and wildfires, Florida has hurricanes and mosquitoes. And if you've ever dealt with their mosquitoes, you would know. And where this goes to is that Oregon has earthquakes and all sizes and distances away. We have been impacted by earthquakes in Japan where the, you know, we've had the wave come over this far. That would probably be more of a distant one. We had in 1964, there was an earthquake in Alaska and that took out the First Street Bridge. Several houses moved, you know, a quarter mile down the creek and parts of downtown flooded. And as far as like relatively close, on July 19th, there was a magnitude 4.5 west of Bandon, Oregon. And that's about 150, it was about 150 miles offshore and they felt it in Eugene, which was another 150 miles. So, that one I would consider to be relatively close and relatively recent. So, we do have those, you know, that are going to be kind of, that are possible here. We also have local and distant tsunamis, the threat of those. A local tsunami is one that occurs more close and two of the impacts of that is that the results are going to get here more quickly and also are more likely to be large. By the time something comes from Japan, it's less likely to be causing as much damage as something that happens maybe 50, 100 miles offshore. And one thing I found is that, you know, when we're talking about like what this structure could handle that kind of thing, there really is no answer because, you know, would this handle a 6.0? And pretty much when you talk to somebody knows what they're talking about. Where is the 6.0? Is it like right under you? Is it 150 miles away? You know, that kind of thing. So, it's really hard to predict anything as far as what would, you know, a particular facility be able to handle. But, and the example of the, you know, 64 tsunami, that would be a distance tsunami. And that one, you know, hopefully we get notice and we get people out and all that kind of thing. Oregon is making strides in getting prepared. If you think about it, if you're responsible for emergency management in the state of Oregon and if a large part of the state is impacted, most of your population centers, cities, things like that are going to have most of the people, probably most of the injuries, all those kinds of things. Also, it's going to be relatively easy to get to them. We're harder to get to after an event. So, you know, it really makes sense that the cities and larger population centers are going to get priority. They'll eventually get to us, but we're not, we would not be at the top of the list. There are concepts for getting supplies to us. We had a really cool demonstration using hovercraft with things coming up from San Francisco. And there, there's consideration for Redmond Airport for supplies to be stationed there, but there's no real plan for getting things to Redmond, the Cana Beach. So, it's conceptual. There's not a inactionable plan necessarily yet. There's other issues along those lines. When, you know, my experiences with hurricanes and you want to restore utilities, remove debris as quickly as possible, those, there's really not a plan for those either. Usually, it's going to be a neighboring community, contractors that you already have contracts with are going to be the ones that would come in and take care of the utilities. Debris removal, in the west, on the east coast, there's companies that are set up just to do debris management and collect their money from FEMA. And we don't have that concept here yet. And Recology, who is kind of the fallback for debris management, really doesn't do debris management the way that FEMA will pay us back. And so, if we do it wrong, I think it was Wichita, didn't separate things the way they were supposed to, didn't document, and they were, they had to absorb like tens of millions of dollars because it was not done properly. It was done expeditiously, but it wasn't done in a way that they would get reimbursed. So, and when we're talking about, you know, any of these kind of plans, if you think about the fires in California, the people you saw fighting those fires were not the local people only. And if there was people came in from Idaho, Oregon, all this. After a disaster, the whole concept, and this I think really started back in with Hurricane Andrew in 92, that you need to have like the cavalry and you need to have it set up in advance. You can't start making phone calls and asking people to come in and help you. And Florida's gotten really good at doing all of that. We don't, we don't have that here yet. And there's, you know, another issue too, that I don't know if it has on the slide. Yes. Being able to get to us in our isolation. If the, the bridge or tunnel fails to the south of us, what road is that that comes in? Is it 20? South of us, the east-west road?
27.
Pardon?
7.
Okay, what everybody said. And then there's another one north of us, which is?
30.
30, okay. Those roads are set as priorities to restore after an event. 26 is not. And I guess the thought is we would be able to get in coming around the side. They've only got so many things that they can do, understand the limitations. And so, we will have access, we'll be able to get people out of here if Youngstown Bridge is still there, if the tunnel's not closed, and if that big beautiful green bridge is still in place on the way down to Bantanita. So, and the point there is that with, when you have to have the cavalry or you want the cavalry to come in, we're, it's going to be hard to get the cavalry to us. So, that just places more responsibility on us to be able to go ahead and be able to deal with the emergency. That's kind of what this says. We'll be on our own more than most of the rest of the state. What are some of the potential deficiencies in terms of emergency management? To me, water is the number one. When we talk about the public works priorities immediately after an event, there's going to be debris to be cleared, utilities to be restored, potentially moving buildings off of people. All of those are number two. Number one is getting water to a point in the city, probably over by the RV park, within three days. All of us are going to try to have our barrels, we're going to try to have supplies of water, two weeks ready, all that kind of stuff. All the people that are coming here for, on a summer day, probably didn't bring all that with them. And so, the most important thing for survival long-term or even medium-term is going to be supply of water. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. When we did our Water Master Plan, one of the elements that was studied was the supply, how we get the water from the springs down to the city. And what we, what was determined was that most of it was constructed before there was any considerations for seismic design. It was used with materials, it might have been used cement or something for the pipe, all of which are very brittle. And so, in looking at that, it was kind of a concern. And also, the tank, I think, was built in the 60s and that was before there was really seismic considerations for that kind of structure. One of the things we found out about the tank is that one option we have is to lower the water level in the tank. And the problem with that is that the water level above wherever you live determines how much pressure there is in the system. Lowering that pressure, here lowering that is going to go ahead and lower the pressure. The reason for that is when that tank starts shaking, that water starts bouncing, it's like if you put a pot of water on the, pretty much full and you go, you get it boiling and you put a top on it, that water's going to knock that top off. So, those are the kind of things that we have to look at in trying to talk about the, what our potential threats are. We have hired a, an engineer to do a study of those things more in-depth, to try to give us costs, try to set priorities. Hopefully, you'll be able to see this, no, not with that one, you won't. Down, this is north. And any map I've ever seen showing the springs, the springs are always at the top. But in this one, it's true north. And so, you have three springs here and that's where our water comes from. And then it comes down to a point to our plant and then it's treated. So, you've got number one place for making sure that it continues to operate. Second is this line that goes to the plant. There is the plant. And then you have a line that goes down kind of close to the public works yard area and then it goes back up to the tank. That's our main pressure tank. That's kind of, that's behind, essentially behind the public works department. And then from there, the water goes down to around Sunset and then it goes into the city system proper. There's one place where our water gets from the springs into the rest of the system. If any of these points, any failures along here, even today, we don't have water until we can fix that. If we have some kind of a seismic event and we lose a tank, probably a lot of other people will have had seismic events and they lost tanks. We, we're just hoping we'll be able to make a phone call to find, you know, talk to some people, but in all likelihood, there's not that many tank companies and they will be booked up for years. So, it's not a small deal to say, well, you know, we'll just go ahead and get a new tank. You won't, probably won't be able to come back until we can get water pressure within the city. So, this whole thing, you know, this concept, when we did the Water Master Plan, these things were mentioned, but to me, the Water Master Plan is work that we can do over the next 20 years. In this particular case, this to me, again, pending this results of the study, jumps ahead of everything else. I'm talking about the water goals, what, what we want to do, and I'll go back one. The RV park is someplace down in this area and we want to have water, a decent supply of water, within three days. Three days is a survival time without water. So, that's why it's our top priority. We want to have a place that people can, at a minimum, people can come to and there's water flow, we can fill buckets, you know, those kind of things. That we want to do within three days. And then our next one, and it'll depend totally on damage, is to have water to most of the city within three months. And that'll be a real push because we're going to have to other contractors and everybody else to come in, all of whom might have been picked up by somebody else first. So, the idea of having, keep hitting the wrong button. The idea of having this resilient and strong helps us in that event and it helps us every day because, again, the pipe is older, brittle, tight and, you know, and you could have failures with it. So, the first is to have water supply available to be treated or already treated within three days. That gets it down. We have a B plan. The emergency management and public works went down to Salem because they just had the experience with the lake, they had the issue with the algae. And so, we all kind of think, you know, we've got some ideas. We went down there and we thought their ideas are better. And so, we will be buying some of that equipment, the filtration equipment, that sort of thing, probably in the next budget, we're going to propose it for the next budget. But it's, it's going to be able to treat some water, but it doesn't treat the kind of load that we use every day, but it'll be survival water for that. And then the next one I just talked about, to have city, water to the city within three months. And that is really iffy. But again, if we lose that chain and the water can't get down to the city, there's really no point in coming back for a while. Now, how do all, how do all these things fit in? I had an interesting discussion this afternoon with some of the people in this room and one of the, one, part of it was about, you know, the idea of city hall and possibly splitting out the police station. One thing that occurred to me after is that city hall's been on the books for like 12 or 15 years. And if anybody hasn't made the tour, when we're done here, I'll be happy to take you around. It's kind of interesting to see. I noticed the people I took on the tour are not sitting by that wall because it's being held up. It's being held up by the ceiling in the next room. I thought that it was holding up the ceiling, it's the other way around. But, so the idea of replacing city hall has been around for a long time and the police station because we're in here. But the idea of the importance of that dying, tying it into emergency management, that is relatively recent as we're, you know, gearing up on those kinds of things. And whether it be in a city hall or a space where we build a police station and then have a EOC, somehow, everything that happens in this building has got to continue. It's not just the police are going to go, and public works are going to fix everything. We're going to need people to take care of the records as far as submitting to FEMA for reimbursement because if, from hurricane experience, you get back about 80% of what you spent if you do everything right and you get that from your insurance company in FEMA. You're still going to eat 20% of whatever it was. But you're not going to get anything if you don't turn the paperwork in and you don't turn it in properly. And then, and also, somebody to deal with the insurance companies and all that kind of stuff to keep those things going. So, that's part of what, say, you know, finance would do. Planning, when, in my experience in EOCs, planning is the one that has got the things on the wall that goes ahead and shows, all right, these areas were destroyed pretty bad, these areas here, we still have victims, whatever, so we can plan, where are we going to send what resources that we have? So, all of the departments are important with that. They don't all have to have, be in their normal offices, but all of those have to be able to function someplace in the city. So, there's three drivers for it. The current facility is in, I guess I meant to leave the word zone on, so that was my fault. But it's, it's currently in the small tsunami zone. So, if we were to have a local tsunami, in all likelihood, this area, I mean, everybody's just projecting that this area would be devastated. And so, we've got all of our, everything that we own is kind of in this house. And so, that's one of the reasons for changing out the police station. The next, and if you haven't been on the tour, let me take you around and you'll, you'll get this point, is it was never designed or built to withstand any level of earthquake. This used to be storage for wood materials, lumber, that kind of thing. And it was retail, you know, warehouse space, that sort of, that sort of an issue. It was never made. On the, the walls, several of the walls are structural and I've been told that some are hollow terracotta block and we also have some hollow cinder block. And those are the buildings that they're putting signs on in Portland saying dangerous, you know, because their ability to withstand the earthquake is not very high. And then the third thing is the current conditioning, the current condition of the building. This one was, I'm sorry. Get that back. The current condition of the building, that was the original impetus for replacing city hall. It was before we talked about all the emergency management stuff, but that is, that has not changed. And then if you were to go ahead and rebuild or fix this building, and we did have a, a total of architects came in and they did, they brought in local contractors, local engineers, and they went through this building and they identified a lot of the things that we're going to show you on the tour. But their conclusion was that it cannot be cost-effective in trying to retrofit this building. And one thing that's been talked about, well, hardening a building. We used to harden buildings in Florida from wind. Excuse me, but if you have, if you were to harden this building and it started to shake, everything inside would fall in and the outside wall would still be there. So, it's very hard to go ahead and like build inside here to go ahead and stop this stuff from falling in. So, it becomes very difficult to do that. And then finally, if you did spend money on this building, it's still in the tsunami zone. So, there's been more of an effort to make sure that, you know, critical facilities are not in the tsunami zone. The, we did a program, it's pretty extensive. It talks about each of the individual spaces that would go into a city hall. That drives some of the, it tells you how much room you're going to need for common spaces and those things generate, you know, drive towards the cost. And there was a city hall, police station program vetting committee, several members are here. And they went through that study, we had the architect come in that did the study, and they voted unanimously that the current city hall facility needs to be replaced. That was not a blinding flash of the obvious because people have been talking about it for 10 years, but it did, did give some validity to the studies that have been done and we're still using those studies to make future decisions as far as if we separate things out. We know how much we have to separate out now based on the space. They're also having ongoing discussions to explore alternative ways to accomplish what's needed and they'll bring that to the city council. One of the things that they're looking at is if we were to try to do something on a smaller scale and replace the police station, probably at a site that is out of all of the tsunami zone, which would be above the XL. And that would probably be property up at South Wind. South Wind has some challenges, but we're looking at what would it cost if we built that? But again, if we just have a police station, doesn't help us much in any kind of an event. And so, we're talking about adding a room about this size as an emergency operations center. Wouldn't be used hardly at all, but that, that we would have a place that we could go to that's up and above and would be able to withstand the earthquakes, all those kind of things and, and be operational immediately after the event. So, that's, that's another concept that's being studied and we'll see where that comes Now comes the hard decisions because it's going to have dollar signs. In this, I'm going to direct this discussion to the council because you know that we've been looking at funding of the utility master plan and it, in order to get where we need to go, there's going to be some significant changes in, in utility rates. So, what are we facing? Just a little background, 2018, we adopted a $23 million master plan. That was in 15, $16. It has to be upgraded, to be completed over 20 years. It was split between water, 17 million, and wastewater, 6 million. Talk about the cost of delaying of decisions, total cost in the two or three years has been gone up 1.8 million. That's assuming a conservative 3% due to escalating construction costs. So, the 23 million became 25.1 million and we're still sorting through some things. We've actually made some, some inroads on it, but we already have that as a background. We talk about what the cost might be for trying to do something with the water supply. And, and more towards the council, but we are looking, in order to give you some ideas about what it would cost or projections to be able to say, what's just going to happen to us over time? We're splitting the, the budget for purposes of discussion only, we know that there's more, it's more complicated than that, but into operations and then capital. So, operations is everything we do day-to-day, paying employees, buying supplies, all that sort of thing. And then separating out large capital projects because those are the things that would probably be funded either by pay-as-you-go, I'll jump ahead there, before I get to that. All right, this is a review of the fiscal years 2011, 2012, what was budgeted, which I'm less concerned about, more concerned about what was actually spent. And if you look in 2011 and 12, we spent $163,000. There were no capital projects. And, I'm sorry, there were capital acquisitions, equipment, that kind of stuff, but we didn't do any work in the ground. 2012, 13, 119,000, again, no capital projects in terms of improving the system. 13, 14, same thing, 176,000, 77,000, and there was no work done in the ground. In 2014, 15, we bought a dump truck, $120,000 and did some water line replacements. So, in recent history, that's the first time that we've actually said, we need to start replacing some of our water lines. That makes sense because the system is about 50, 60 years old. I'm personally longer than that and I know that my costs went up when I hit 50 or 60 more maintenance. So, anyway, that, so that occurred. And then 15, 16, again, capital acquisitions, but not any line replacement. And then, you know, more activity in 16, 17, again, this is all equipment that we bought, nothing in the ground. And then in 17, 18, this was shortly after we got the, the Water Master Plan, we did budget, you know, some, some more money, one of the highest numbers that we budgeted. And we, we had two projects, but it took us longer to get those done in that year. And so, they were actually moved forward to 18, 19. And you can see the budget jumped to 700,000. That's when we did a, like a 35% increase in the utilities to try to get more capital projects. And you can see that year, we accomplished 484,780 that included completing Asterite, Asterite, the slow sand filter. The S curves, right now, there's a, we have two lines taking water, we did, taking two lines, water, I'm sorry, two lines taking water to the south. And when we had the slide, I don't know how many years ago it was, but there was a slide around the S curves, that took out one of our two water lines. So, we've been operating on one line, hoping nothing happens and then be able to go ahead and send water to the south. So, this year, they actually went, you can see some of the road cuts, you know, as you're looking down the, the S curves, but we replaced that line again. So, now we have a redundant way to get water to the south. So, that was an important project. Sunset Pressure Tank, our public works folks did a great job. That was projected to be $300,000. What did you end up doing it for? 15? They found, they, they just beat the heck out of a bunch of engineers and somebody came up with a way, well, really, you know, you don't need to rebuild everything, you just need a pressure tank down here because your pumps were running all the time. So, we were able to go ahead and pull that one off. And then we started installing fire hydrants. We put five new ones in it, you know, that year. And that, there's a direct impact on that because we have a rating on your insurance and the closer you are to a hydrant and a fire station and all that makes a difference. But we had places that you probably, we still do, that whatever water they're going to fight a fire with, it has to be in the truck. So, we're trying to do more fire hydrant replacements too. But you can see that there was, you know, considerable budget, now it came with it, in that. So, when I'm talking to council, I'm trying to do projections and how can we, how much can we accomplish and how much, how much is it going to cost? We can go back to these years and save money, but we're going to go back to the same level of effort. What we did this time for this, for the model I'm going to show you, we looked at the numbers really hard and we said, we can continue to work at this pace to go ahead and take care of things from an operational standpoint, plus we could do management of the projects that would come up under the capital side. And so, just for the sake of discussion, we're using this number as, call it, you know, a base budget number for just the operational cost. So, everybody following me on that? Okay. So, there's a couple of ways to do the, the capital costs and we'll get back to what I was just showing you. One is pay-as-you-go and we've been doing that for a long time. It's you set the rates in such a way and you either raise rates or you repurpose the money that's collected and say, we're going to go ahead and we save enough money, we'll do that project. And so, that's, that's one way that we can get things done. Because when the adequate funds are there, the project can proceed. Or we can go with loans. And this is a scary thing for most people, but the funds are borrowed and paid off incrementally over the life of a project. One of the downsides of this is that you require a debt service line item to be included to pay for that particular project. In most cases, we would be able to charge projects from 20 to 40 years. And to me, that, that's a huge benefit. And the reason is, if you all were to go ahead and do replacement of the tank and we paid for it and you just, we just raised your rates and that covered the cost of the, the tank, that's great and everybody after us will thank you because they got a free tank. And everybody after us will thank you because they got a free tank. But if you do it with a loan and you've got debt service, if you're here for three years and you paid one tenth of what the total cost of the debt service is going to be, then the next person comes in and they pay, and they pay. So that, to me, is, you know, it's a fairer way to distribute the costs. And another part, another aspect of it is that it allows you to get enough money to do the project. Because with the pay as you go, the implications, first of all, to collect a million dollars requires an 80% rate increase right now. So if we got $20 million worth of work, you know, that's, that's a lot of, no, that takes care of that one year. The next year, you keep the rates the same, plus an inflation factor, you can go ahead and collect the next million. But you start with this 80 million, or 80% jump to go ahead and start collecting per every million. Need to be increased to cover inflation, and then we would, again, increase or repurpose revenues to make the payments. Doing the loan, the loan should be paid by residents as it's used, we already talked about that. The interest rates are at historically low levels. I'll give you an example in a minute that's crazy, but we found that, I think, in looking at the city hall police station, about a year ago, we were looking at 3% in the bond market, and now, the last time we looked for a 30-year note, it was like 2.1. So the costs, it's a good time if you are going to be borrowing. The debt service would be paid by either increasing or repurposing the money that we're currently collecting. The annual debt service, if we were to borrow a million dollars, it's probably about $54,000 would have to be put into the next budget to start the payment for that million dollars. And that would continue for 30 years. The next million, another $54,000, and that would continue on for another 30 years. So as we add these, there's going to be a significant increase, you know, in trying to, depending on how much we decide to do. And each, the $54,000 requires a 4.5 increase, a 4.5% increase in the budget to be able to cover that debt service. Now, this is one of the crazy things that we've been able to come up with, that kind of changes the math on. We are working with Business Oregon because they do loans for water projects. And we have a project that's 624,000, and that's to replace the meter modules. I know you're all excited about that. $624,000 to do that project. Under this program, which is partially funded by the federal government, thank you, they forgive the principal of $322,000. That means for a $624,000 project, we're paying, $302,000 we have to pay back at 1% for 20 years. Now, these are the people we hope to do a lot of business with. Because the numbers that I gave, those are whole numbers. And if we, you know, and we, we had something, it was called a, what was it when everybody came in? What did we call that?
Dr. Swann.
Hmm?
One Stop.
One Stop. They've got this cool program in the state where they bring all the people in that can loan you money, or give you grants or anything like that, and you tell them what you need, and they tell you what they can do. And so that got us started in working with Business Oregon. And so we're looking at this, and we, like, we can't do the same deal with them for wastewater, but DEQ can give us loans like 1%. So we're trying to find the best deals. We're going below market rate to do these things. So, but this is an example of what can happen. City Hall Police Station project cost, it ranges, depending on the site and the configuration, sometimes it's two stories, sometimes it's one, is 15 to 17 million dollars. The cost and configurate, I said earlier, the cost and configurations are being studied by the vetting committee. They met in here at 3 o'clock. Again, the cost of delay, and you need to take the time to make the right decision, but time costs you. And so between May 2018 and May 2019, that cost went from the 15 to 17 million increased by $750,000. So that's just, you know, the reality of anything being held. The debt service for a home, we've assessed value of half a million dollars. When we started, it was 3.75, no, I'm sorry. It was 7.5 cents per thousand, or $75 per 100,000. So that put it at the higher level that we got here showing. And that meant a half a million dollar house, it would cost $375 a year to pay for all of the improvements that are related to the city hall. Because the rates have dropped in that time, it's now down to about a little bit under 4 cents per thousand. And so that puts that cost for a half a million dollar home at $200 a year. So we're talking about ways to try to cut the cost, that's one side of it. The other side is everybody makes a decision based on, well, how much is this going to cost me? Because 16, 17 million, sounds crazy, but if I make a decision, is it, the improvements that we would get, is it worth 200 or 375? If we ever get to a referendum or referral, that's, you know, those questions will be answered. So going back on the model we were talking about, we're projecting that if we try to stay at that same level of effort, it's 4.5% for the operational side. And then to do a million dollars in a loan, which we may be able to beat using Business Oregon, but we're not counting on that, would be another 4.5% for every million. So you see, what we're looking at is either, you know, we can do a significant increase, kind of hold off and then do projects as, you know, we finally collect the money. Or we can, we can borrow. And then, but when it's going, you can see, if you go back to that chart, we really didn't have a lot of effort in this area, and so we didn't have to pay for it. There's some policy decisions here. Do we want to go ahead and address the things that are included in the master plan? And we can do those over 20 years. Do we want to do something about the water resiliency? That I would advocate to try to get done more quickly. And do we want to do, you know, the pulling together what it would take to go ahead and build a, at a minimum, a police station with a EOC? Or the cost may come out that it makes sense to go ahead and do the whole city hall police station. The, those all have significant cost implications, and so that's why I'm saying that it's a policy decision. Because if you decide those things are important and we should do it, then the costs come into play. If you're worried about the costs, then we can hold on and stay at that, you know, the same rate with just the 4.5% operational cost. Or we can actually go back, but we won't be putting, we will stop doing improvements that we started doing a year or two ago. So that's part of the policy decision side that you've got. Then, I have Cannon Beach Elementary up here, it's kind of just an informational thing. It's not on the same scale by any means. Purchase price, we're looking at $400,000. Tentative uses, and this is not finalized at all, but like an event center, park, Indian Village restoration, you know, who knows what else? We don't know what the development cost will be because we don't know what it's going to be. But the tentative good news is that we have a funding source, it's not out of the general fund, not out of your taxes, and there may be some dual use for the facility like this, that if we can justify it as a tourist attraction, if we can justify it, say, as hotels being able to say, we have an event center and we can get you there if you want to come in and do a small conference or something like that. Or, and it's, I think the environment's becoming a little bit more friendly to this. You're not supposed to spend money on parks out of this, but people have found ways to do that if they can tie it to an improvement or drawing, meeting the definition of tourist coming from more than 50 miles away. So if we develop a park system that is enough of an attraction, part of our ecotourism, you know, theme, then those kind of things are possible. I'm not banking on it yet. But hopefully, we'll be able to develop all or most of this using that fund. And those funds, you recall the jail, they passed the, we all passed the jail referendum for that, and now it's being funded. But when you build a jail, you have to have people in it and supplies and that kind of stuff. And so what the county did is they said, we will put in a one cent TRT, or transient room tax. So now they've got that in place. You can't spend right now, if a city or the county puts something like that out with some very significant lobbying efforts, we get to keep 30%, but we have to give 20%, or 70% to tourism promotion. So we're all going to try to fix that, but that's the way that it is. What happened, where this money's coming from, is that the county doesn't have an immediate need for TRT funds. So they said, whatever city they're generated in, we'll just give you back that 70%. So that's how we're paying for this. And now, the caution on this thing is that if the TRT funds are determined to be ineligible for some or all of it, and we want to do this project, we're counting on the TRT funds at this point. But at some point, it may come out of taxes if we want to go ahead and do the project. So I just put that out with everything else that we got going. This is a new project that we're all excited about moving forward on, but that it's, we have a bill pair, but we don't know if that will continue, and we don't know how much it's going to cost, because we don't know what we're going to do. So that's just up there, kind of saying, keep this in your mind while you're, while you're looking at stuff. See that? It's as long as it takes you to do a quarterly report. Okay. Any questions, any clarification I can provide?
I have a couple of questions. The money that you showed that was in the budget for utilities, it showed that you had a certain amount budgeted and a certain amount that was spent. What happened to the difference in that money?
It goes into fund balance.
So explain.
Here, I'll show you. On this one. If it was 197 and it was spent 163, the difference goes into fund balance, isn't it? That's the number at the end. There's an amount, like, we generally don't spend all of our budgets, and so there's money left over. And suppose we do that three years in a row. You accumulate all three of those, that's a fund balance that's growing. And that kind of becomes your beginning balance as you're doing your budgets. So if we didn't spend the money, it would have come, it would have, go into fund balance. But if you have a year like this one, where we budgeted 97 and spent 120, that would probably come out of fund balance.
Is that like a savings account?
Not really a savings account. A savings account, in my mind, you put it aside because you want to save it. But in this one, it is money that's left over from the way that you were budgeting, and so it stays within that fund. Now, something I kind of ignored, but trying not to get too complicated on it, but if we have money, if we collect money in the utility fund, it's really hard to use it for anything else. There are expenses that the utility fund pays to the general fund for like, you know, my time and, you know, the rent of the building, all that kind of stuff. There's that sort of a thing, but that's based on expenses. So it's very hard to move that. The general fund is a beautiful thing, because the general fund, you can spend it on anything. But the issue with the general fund is a lot of it comes from your taxes, not most of it, but a lot of it comes from the taxes that you pay. And then another good chunk of it comes from the tourism taxes, and this is why it's good to maintain a good relationship with the chamber and the businesses, because they pay about 70%. Is it 70% or 60%? About 70% of the money that goes into our general fund comes from people paying the tax to stay here for, you know, for a night or two or whatever. So that money is great because we can use it in utilities, we can use it wherever we want. But if you have fund balance in the utilities, it's hard to go ahead and use that on anything but utilities. So, but we don't purposely, there's times that you will, like, for example, if we were to do pay as you go on a project, it's going to be $3 million, we're generating a million a year, we would save the million, we save the second million, third million, we go and we'd start doing work, but it would be designated.
Risa, I have one more question.
Sure.
When you talk about the taking out a loan, and it would, for utilities, and it would cost, the bill rates would increase by 4.5% for every $1 million that you're borrowing.
Yes.
The next year, you borrow another $1 million. Does that mean that that, that your utility rates increase another 4.5%?
Yes.
So is that 4.5% on the original? Or is that 4.5% on the prior year's rates, which were increased then by 4.5%?
To be safe, I will say that it's on the total, but it would also be more specific. For example, we've not, we've not moved forward on some of these projects with Business Oregon for water. If, we saw in the example with the meters, that it was more than 50% was forgiven. And so then your, the payment would be closer to like, you know, 27,000, 25,000. So it'll be pretty specific, but I would say that you count on it being on the total, and then hopefully we'll be pleasantly surprised. But I wouldn't want to say that somehow we've gotten far enough ahead that we can actually do that math and give you that answer.
Okay. So in the response to my specific question, if you borrow a million dollars one year, rates go up 4.5%? Borrow another million dollars another, the second year, they go up again, 4.5%?
Yes.
From the, from the prior year's rates?
Yes. Or in one year, if you borrow 3 million, they would go up like 13 and a half percent. Now, there's another thing that, you know, I want to make sure we all understand, is that we've also talked, if we want to go ahead and continue this level of effort, it would be a 4.5% increase on the operational side. And then we separated it out, 4.5% per million dollars. So if you accept that as kind of like the standard year, and we increase by 4.5% next year, and then put in for a million dollars, then that, the budget, and again, remember, we weren't doing a lot of projects before, all of a sudden, that's a 9% increase. So it's not, the 4.5 doesn't cover both. No, we can make things better. I'm giving you the higher end on the numbers. I don't believe that the 54,000 is necessarily changed, that we've changed that number since the market went from three to two. So, you know, there might be a difference in that, but I'm just giving you kind of what we think right now is like a worst case.
But then again, it would be higher if the interest rate goes up.
Yes. Yes. Which kind of argues, like, if you, and I tend to think of, this is a 25 million dollar, 28 million dollar a year business, and you're all the board of directors, and, you know, you also have to answer to an awful lot of people, but I think that, you know, looking at things from a business standpoint, is it smarter for everybody if we know we're going to do 3 million or 4 million to go ahead and do it, get it at the best rate that we can, as opposed to stretch it out? And all of these are policy decisions. But I think that that's important when we're doing these to look at it from the standpoint that we are a 25, 28 million dollar a year business. And you are an unpaid board of directors, and that's just wrong.
And we get all these perks.
Yeah. Well, you got something to-
We can see each other three nights a week.
I was going to say, yes, you got some nice people you sit with, and you got something to do at night, besides what, football?
Oh, this is money.
Okay. I don't have any answers. All's that can do now is give information, but it's obviously something that we need to talk about now that we've got an idea of what it's going to cost for us to do these projects. And having more than one thing going on at the time. So we've kind of built a model that you can work in to say, what are the impacts? But I would suggest you start, suggest you start from the position of doing what you think is right, as opposed to doing what you think can pass or what you can live with. You can always come back, but, you know, our business is, you know, we take care of people, and that requires us to take care of systems and other things. So I always like to start from the standpoint, what should we do? And then we move backward from that, as opposed to what I think I can get away with. Did that come about bad?
One other aspect of this that I know is lingering is the other idea of, for fundraising- One other, uh, aspect of this that I know is lingering is the other idea of, for fundraising. Because we've got the idea of raising rates and loans, uh, there's still that option for a bond, which could, that would be a very specific ask of the population to pay for a project specifically, um, through a bond system. I just want everybody to understand that a loan and a bond are different animals.
Yeah. And if we did a, I'm not sure, if, because that would probably be a revenue bond, but, um, the last time the city did this, when we put in the wastewater system, it went out for a general obligation bond. General obligation bonds, um, I don't know what this means, but you pledge the full faith and credit of the city. That means, if you're working on some other stuff, and you don't have enough money in your budget, you will raise taxes to be able to pay that note. So, bond lovers love that, and you get a better rate than you do if you use a revenue bond that says, "As long as we're making enough money, we'll pay you." So, you're going to pay more for that. So, um, the last time that they did it, they used general obligation bonds, um, but remember, it's based, no longer based, well, actually, it is based on your $500,000 house, if that's the model that we're using, because it's going to be on your tax bill. And so, whatever your, uh, your valuation is, and whatever rate we have to charge, that's how it'll be split, as opposed to how much water someone is using. And there's one other thing that I, I'm looking at Carolyn here, who's the head of our Public Works Committee, and something that people have concerns about is that not everybody pays real estate taxes. Uh, you have institutions like churches, that kind of stuff, they don't pay that. And so, um, sometimes you have big users of water that won't pay for water improvements if you do that, you know, on the, on the bond. But, um, what Sam is saying, probably the best rate that we're going to get would be a GO bond, except for the deal that we're currently getting from Business Oregon, um, you know, because that's even below that number. But it is a way to pay for it. So, I apologize for not including that.
Well, I'm just, I'm not promoting it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another tool that we have in our...
Yes, yeah. I, I kind of included that in the whole loan concept.
Yeah.
But that's a, there is a big distinction.
Okay. Um, as long as there's any other questions for Bruce? Uh, the idea was that we would have then next Wednesday's evenings discussion would be allow, uh, people will be able to come up and have comments, questions, uh, yell at us a little bit, whatever. So, that keeps it, the meetings shorter, so that we're not all here until midnight. With that, um, if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll move on to Good to the Order.
Yeah.
Okay? So, at Good to the Order, um, I have two, two comments that I would like to make. We have an issue that is brewing with, uh, Oregon State Parks, and, uh, just earlier this week, last week, what is, yeah, last week. Bruce, Robin, and I, uh, went down and spoke with some representatives of Oregon State Parks, Trevor and Jay. We had a nice discussion, um, to a point, and it's going to, it's going to be a topic that a council will need to address. Right now, we're moving, in a manner the staff is, uh, hiring an engineer to look into the issue and its outfalls on the beach, um, issue, that State Parks is concerned about. I think we're, at least my take on it was, we've got a, uh, a means to work with them now. Uh, it was feeling very combative at, at a certain point, and now I think we've put a little bit of salve on that. How'd you feel about it?
I thought it was a nice discussion, and I thought, considering what we had to discuss, it went very well.
Okay. And, uh, I suspect that within the coming months, the council will have long and, and more detailed discussions. That's one item. The other item is, uh, kind of leads into that, is we're going to be having a council, city council retreat early next year, no dates yet, but I'm asking the council, uh, themselves to put forward topics. Bruce and I talked about this a little bit this morning, um, we've got some time yet to do this, but I want to start generating our agenda, uh, like we have in the past. So, when you got ideas, send them to either to me or Bruce, or however, Colleen, uh, just so we can start compiling our, our list. Okay, that's...
Just to try to keep everybody, um, out of general, how dare you send to me, Colleen?
That's true.
So, you don't get into conversations.
Is it okay if we just, uh, send it, uh, to the entire council, and you and Colleen? Is that all right?
No. Just send it to Colleen.
If, problem is, you can...
I, I understand.
Yeah, but the next person to comment on it is invited.
Okay. And Janet, what we've done in the past is, you just send your topics in, and then either Colleen or Bruce or myself will figure out which topics are within what range, and we compile a list that works, uh, rather than, because we'll all have some of the same things. We've always done that in the past. So, that's all I have for Good to the Order. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Oh, we, we will be meeting, we will have coffee with the counselors next Monday night, Monday morning. What is this today? Coffee with the counselors at 10:00 on Monday in the city, uh, the city, small city, uh, conference room. So, if anybody has anything they want to say, or want to talk to us about, please come and join us. 10:00, Monday morning.
Okay. At that, we are adjourned, and I hope to see everybody back on Wednesday.
Anybody want to do the tour?